At the City of Stillwater, safety is a high priority. Safety doesn't just happen. You have to think about it and you have to work on it. We train our employees to take every situation seriously and take the proper precautions because sending every employee home safe is our number one goal.
Hello, I'm Kyle Gibbs. The Police Department's mission is public safety. Our officers respond to a wide variety of calls for assistance, many of which involve hazards and some degree of risk. We use training, tactics, and equipment to mitigate those risks to keep ourselves and the public safe. Today, I want to take you through and show you some of the equipment that every patrol officer carries on his person or in his patrol car to accomplish our mission. It may not be exciting, but the most important piece of equipment that we carry on our person or in our cars is this radio. These radios are our lifeline to dispatch and other officers who are waiting to assist us when we're out on calls. Imagine trying to overpower and control a violent combative subject. It's a difficult task at best, but for that purpose and to help us out, we have a number of less-than-lethal weapons that we can use. A baton has been the mainstay of law enforcement for decades. However, as much as they work for pain compliance and controlling, they can cause injuries. Other tools that we have on our belt for that purpose are OC spray, as well as these. These are tasers or electrical control weapons. These two items are meant to overpower and incapacitate a suspect without causing any injury at all so that we can get them handcuffed and under control. Some of the more common equipment that we carry on our belts and in the car are things like gloves, first aid kits, fire extinguishers, a trauma kit for gunshot wounds with a tourniquet. We also carry biohazard suits, ice cleats, and even blankets. All these things are needed quite commonly to help do our jobs. All the equipment that I've just shown you is necessary for us to work as safely as possible. The selection and use of all this equipment is guided by the principle that a downed officer can't help anyone. At the Police Department, we are committed to working safely so that we can survive and prevent harm to the community that we serve. Thanks for watching today.
To break the news, which is not so secret anymore...
Non-stop flights to Dallas-Fort Worth Airport.
This is such a great example of the partnership that OSU and Stillwater have together.
It's a great day to visit Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Welcome to the award-winning Stillwater Energy Center.
You can accept the findings or recommend approval. You can recommend the request be denied, or you can table the request.
Any discussion?
I think it makes sense for it to have the same, at least, type requirements as the other fraternities and sororities.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to approve staff findings, or sorry, accept staff findings for recommended approval.
Second? Shall we vote digitally or by voice?
This is good.
Alrighty. And that will pass six to nothing. Thank you. Item C, Excel Development Group map amendment rezoning PZ-17-2191 requesting review and approval of a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 702 South Jardoe from MH Mobile Manufactured Home to RTM Residential Two-Family Multifamily. Mr. Beatty?
This map amendment is located on South Jardoe, just south of Sixth Street. It was previously a mobile home zoning. Going to increase it to... Who got the wrong one? Going to increase it to... Sorry, lost my note. Request is to RTM residential medium density. The surrounding zoning to the north is general commercial, residential single-family to the west, and mobile home zoning to the south and to the east. So, photo of the existing site, they removed the old mobile homes and abandoned most of the services there. The RTM zoning allows up to 20 units per acre. Wasn't allowed at all with the mobile home park zoning. Other comparison of the bulk requirements of the different zoning. The zoning is located between a higher intensity commercial zoning to the north and the lower intensity residential mobile home zoning to the south. The comprehensive plan recommends multifamily between commercial and lower-density residential development. The comprehensive plan recommends up to 20 units per acre, and the RTM allows up to 20 units per acre. So, the request fits in line with all of those intents and uses. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Beatty? Alrighty. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please step forward, state your name. And state your address too, if you would.
Okay. I'm Jennifer McCabe. I'm with Excel Development Group. I live in Shawnee. You still want my address?
Absolutely.
45402 Artist D Road in Shawnee. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions that you may have about why we are requesting this rezoning.
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask anyone wishing to speak against this item, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
As with the last one, you can accept the findings and recommend approval. You can recommend that request be denied, or you can continue or table it to a certain date.
Any questions for Mr. Beatty? Alrighty. Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say, I'm excited to see some development, new development going on on the east side of town, especially southeast. We haven't had a lot of development there recently, so I'm excited to see that redevelopment in that area.
So, I move to accept findings, recommend the City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
I'll second that. And that does pass as well, six to zero. Alrighty, folks. Before we go forward with the next item, I would like to just kind of give us a few guidelines. First of all, if you're planning on speaking tonight, would you please raise your hand, kind of give us an idea of how many folks? Alrighty. Good deal. Appreciate that. We have a lot of citizens that are here tonight that may decide they want to speak, so to make sure everyone gets a chance to be heard tonight, we'd ask that each speaker only gets one turn at the podium tonight. We're going to give you five minutes to speak when you get up here. Also, keep in mind that tonight, we are... The job of the Planning Commission is simply to give a recommendation to the City Council. You'll also have a chance to be heard at the City Council meeting later on as well, so keep that in mind as well, if you would. Please try not to repeat what other previous speakers have talked about. If you have something to add to a previous point, please do that. However, merely repeating the same thing over and over doesn't advance dialogue and takes time away from other speakers that might have something new to pass on. No clapping, cheering, or booing in response to a speaker's comment, and when you step up to the podium, please just state your name and address, and we would sure appreciate that. And once you all state what you have to say, if you have any questions, we're going to go ahead and let you ask those, and then at the very end, we'll call staff forward to address those questions. So, we'll just go ahead and let you all state those and call staff forward to address those as well. And with that, we will go with Item 3A, the City of Stillwater 12th Avenue Land Use Plan Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code Amendment, PZ-17-2192 requesting review and approval of an amendment to the Stillwater C3 Comprehensive Plan 2030, Chapter 9 Areas of Special Interest and Tax Amendment to the Text Amendment to the Land Development Code, Chapter 23, Article 13, Overlay Districts by adding overlay districts to the 12th Avenue Land Use Plan Study Area. Paula?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the slideshow here has a mind of its own, so we may be looking at it this way so it won't advance by itself. So, I'm just going to right quickly go through the information, general information that was provided in your packets, and then open it up for questions, and then we will move into the public hearing. I do want to make note that the information... I know it was a lot of information provided to y'all in this packet on this item. We had two additional emails that were received today, and those have been distributed and laid at your chairs for you to look over as well. So, beginning with this item, back in the fall, there was a rezoning request for property located within the study area. The study area is this area that is shown in the hatch. So, the rezoning request came in, and at the January 23rd City Council meeting, the City Council tabled indefinitely that request and directed staff to conduct a planning process to evaluate if there is any update or anything to the comprehensive plan for the area and whatever else might come out of that planning process. So, that is what is here before you this evening, is the... Where we are in that planning process. We have objectives for the planning process, to the vision for the area. What is it? Should it be adjusted? Should it be changed? That's what the future land use map in the adopted comprehensive plan states. And after that analysis, are there any changes to laws and guiding documents that may be needed also to come out? We had a number of, as you can tell in your packets, we had a number of opportunities for public input to be received through this process. We had a survey through Survey Monkey. Those results are included in your packet. We had input meetings. I will briefly go through those results. We had active live polling where we were able to use clickers, and the folks in attendance would actually vote, and it would pop up. Those polling results are included in your packet as well, so you can see how that did. We had direct mailings, emails, and e-notification through Stillwater.org if anyone signed up on the news feed that we had about this. So, a total of 138 responses to the survey that was conducted through Survey Monkey. Thirty-one of those are owners or residents in the study area. Twenty-six of those are owners or residents in the notification area, which I will go back to the map, is the bold red line was the notification area. Four of the Survey Monkey results are from workers in the study or notification area, and 77 results or responses are from interested citizens outside of the study or notification area. We did hold three input meetings. Average attendance at those input meetings was about 36 citizens attend. With direct mail, we sent out 1,609 letters via the postal service. We had a total of 146 recipients of notifications through email. We had 23, now counting the two today, 25 emails from citizens. Those are also included in your packet. And again, we used the polling software for real-time vote casting and tallies of those in attendance at the input meetings. So, gathering up... Well, let me just address this right quickly before I get into the public input. We had produced a schedule back in late January, early February, when we received direction and were able to create an outline for this planning process. This schedule has carried forward, as you can see, the introductory meeting, then we identified when the survey would close, the consensus meeting, the final draft and wrap-up meeting, and of course, tonight, the Planning Commission meeting, and this is advertised for City Council at their next meeting, which is May 15th, two weeks from last night. So, those are the... All the public meetings that were held. So, after all of the information, the public input was received, and the process of receiving it, staff determined that what we were hearing from the variety of interested citizens, owners, occupants, workers, et cetera, in the study area or outside of the study area resulted in two land use plans that are in your packet and two overlay districts. So, alternative one on land use plan. This is the current land use plan that is adopted in the C3 Plan for the City of Stillwater. This identifies no change to the area. The red at Washington and 12th and along the south side of 12th, that identifies a future land use, not zoning, because zoning, commercial zoning, can take the form of four different zoning districts. This identifies these properties for a future land use of commercial. It does not specify which one of the zoning districts, just commercial land use on these properties. The blue is identified as public land use. The one lot over here on the east side of Washington, the reason it was included is because it became an active rezoning request during the initial stages of developing this planning process. So, the green on that lot is park or open space land use. And then the light yellow, which encompasses the rest of the study area, is low-density residential. And alternative two, which is the base land use map as it is adopted in the comprehensive plan, this alternative identifies two separate overlay districts that are a possibility for consideration and evaluation by the Planning Commission with recommendation to the City Council. Overlay District One is the pink area on the western part of the study area, north side of 12th Avenue. It does not extend to the south side, so it's the north side only, from the western extent of the study area to the property that is bisected by Blakely Street, which is this property. So, you have those. The companion overlay district is going to be from the property that bisects Blakely Street, by Blakely Street, east to the extent of the study area, again, just on the north side of 12th Avenue. And I will state that on this map, some of these properties, where it looks like 12th Avenue with the white is coming in, and then it stops, and then it jumps up, 12th Avenue actually goes through there. There's a curve in 12th Avenue. And a lot of those properties, since they are city-owned or public right-of-way, they still have the lot lines and the dimensions on them. If we had turned the area alone, you would have seen the lanes of the street making that curve. So, these properties are the north parcels along 12th Avenue. The ones right in the blue are not. That's actually road, in case anybody was interested in that. So, after these two land use plans were identified and drafted up, the next objective by staff was to develop overlay districts based on the feedback that were reflective and representative of each of these separate areas. So, the western overlay district and the eastern overlay district. So, for the western portion, we have developed the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. That recognizes the conservation of single-family residential use and structures, and any design requirements in that western piece would be for new residential development, roof pitch, building height. If you had a chance to look through it, it's just complementary on the types of uses and structures that are existing in that area of the neighborhood. So, that will be the western overlay proposal. The eastern overlay proposal is more of a neighborhood mixed-use overlay district. And what this proposal does is it recognizes changing in the area. The area primarily on the south side of 12th has changed, is changing, and it looks like that it will continue to change and develop in some form or fashion. The neighborhood mixed-use overlay allows for neighborhood scale uses. Those are outlined in the text that is before you. Things such as... Well, I'll pull it up here in a moment, but it recognizes the need to have materials, buildings that are better integrated into the neighborhood. They don't just appear to be a big commercial building sitting right next to a residential neighborhood. So, there's material considerations. There's setback considerations. There is porches on your commercial or office building that, again, complement the feel and the character of what's identified in the residential neighborhood. So, that's part of the neighborhood scale and the design requirements for the new development. Again, the building height, the square footage of non-residential buildings, and we'll get into that a little further, those are going to be the scale. A workout gym, or a wine bar, or a bookstore, or, you know, a medical office, or a lawyer's office, or an insurance agent. Those are also the neighborhood scale developments and uses that can occur as well. And again, those are outlined in your report. Y'all have those overlay districts. After the input, the variety of input, there were a number of items that did require further discussion. There was... There were items that remained unresolved because of... There was, there were items that remained unresolved because of how broad the responses were on some of those items. So they are going to be listed on the next slide for discussion by the Planning Commission. And I would suggest that, I'll just run through them right quickly. They're identified in your report as to what those items are, but just keeping those on the front of your mind, while the public has an opportunity to voice their concerns and their wishes, can help with any decision that the Planning Commission makes. So, one of those is adjust the boundary of the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, and complementary to that, adjust the boundary for the Neighborhood Mixed Use Overlay District. Are the boundaries that staff has identified from the Blakely Street property west, and then from that Blakely Street property east, are those proper applications if the Planning Commission chooses to recommend these overlay districts? Or does that line need to be adjusted any? Is a rezoning process necessary with an overlay district? This is a little unusual in the planning profession, because an overlay district typically has already identified those uses that are acceptable for the properties that are covered by that overlay district, and there is no need to come back through a rezoning process to have those uses implemented on the properties. Maximum size of single-unit buildings, just freestanding, there's one commercial or office unit in that building, what's the maximum size for that? What about a maximum size of multi-unit buildings or the units themselves, if there are multiple units in a single building? This was an interesting discussion at the last input meeting, the kinds of alcohol establishments. There was quite a bit of debate on, is a wine bar proper? Is just a bar proper? Is a beer garden proper? And so that's why we're throwing it up to the Planning Commission for consideration for the overlay districts. And then, something that came up that staff had not addressed was, should there be increased screening for dumpsters? Neighborhood and integrate the non-residential uses into a neighborhood. Residential uses usually don't have those commercial dumpsters. They have the trash cart. So additional screening of those types of facilities and uses that are critical to any non-residential use that may be in the area. So these are just things to keep in mind as you are conducting the public hearing. The findings are identified in your report also, and these are very generally summarized. They're further outlined in your report. But findings, staff has found that the planning process was conducted to consider a possible change to the comprehensive plan for the area around 1220 West 12th Avenue, and this, again, was directed by City Council. The study area has, is, and will continue to develop in some form. Through a variety of means to collect public input, a desire to preserve and enhance the neighborhood was found. Overlay districts may be used to accomplish the neighborhood concerns and to allow for appropriate development. Land use plan Alternative 1 would make no changes to the land use plan as adopted in the comprehensive plan. Land use plan Alternative 2 would authorize specific uses and design criteria for developments in the study area. The Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District would establish low-density residential development as the only uses allowed for in a specified area. Neighborhood Mixed Use Overlay District would establish a mixture of uses complementary to the residential neighborhood, and with specific design criteria for all buildings and site development for a specified area. The Planning Commission is requested to make determinations on specific items in the overlay district proposals. And finally, these overlay districts will encourage appropriate development opportunities and themes. I would be happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have of me at this time.
I've got a few.
Yes, sir.
Okay. First off, I noticed we had a breakdown of the folks that responded. We had 64 that lived or worked in the whole area, and then we had 77 people that responded that were outside of the study.
Study and notification area.
Correct. On that same vein, how many of the 31 at the meetings were outside, or how many were folks that lived in the study area? Do you know that?
We did not take a poll, but it would be close to half were within the study area and/or notification area, and then some outside.
That was half of 36?
Yes, an average of about 36.
Okay. Appreciate that. Is this Form-based code?
No.
It looks very familiar.
It is not. When you start getting in, if I may elaborate just a little.
Yeah, I might.
When you start getting into design requirements, that is dealing with how buildings look, somewhat how they function, which is more Form-based, but how they look, how they appear, does it look like a commercial or an industrial building, or does it have semblance of residential, which is the intent for this? Of course, landscaping and screening is always a concern when you have non-residential up against residential, so stepping that up in the overlay districts. The materials to keep it more of a residential flavor on those buildings. Height, yes. So Form-based has a lot of design criteria, but Form-based is primarily design criteria, less use. This integrates both the design and the use allowances in these overlay proposals.
So similar, but not exactly.
Similar, but not exactly. Correct.
Okay. Are there any unintended consequences of these overlay districts that we need to make folks aware of? I mean, if, okay, if, let's say we do recommend to City Council for the two overlays, are there unintended consequences that could come out of that for the landowners? And that's a big concern of mine.
Certainly. There could be, let's take the mixed-use overlay. Start there. The mixed-use overlay, if recommended to the council and adopted by the City Council, that is going to be a limit on just those uses that are allowed in that overlay district and the properties that are covered by that overlay. Is there something else in five years that the neighborhood, staff, Planning Commission, City Council has not thought of, might not even have been dreamed up yet, some use? It's possible. Is there a process to address it? Yes, amend the overlay through a public hearing process like we're having now. The same would go for the residential. The residential, we had interesting questions of, from the building materials standpoint, some of the houses have vinyl siding. Well, that's not one of the materials that has been recommended in the overlay district, so there was a concern about, can I not maintain the vinyl siding and the material on my home? You can go ahead and maintain it. If you build new, then you would be obligated under those material restrictions on that overlay district.
What if you add on to it, or remodel it?
The add-on would need to comply with primarily wood brickstone. You can still have some accent of the siding to tie it together with the rest of the house. But for any new development, which would include an addition, you would not be able to just continue on that theme as it exists all the way through. Remodeling, that's usually interior, and would not be affected by anything on the outside.
And who would make that determination, Paula, at that point? Let's say someone wanted to add on to their house. How much of what they, I mean, what criteria would be followed, one, and who would make that determination?
Everything would begin with staff when that application was submitted. It would be reviewed by the planning staff, who would be aware of the overlay criteria and requirements at that point. If there was any major issue that was identified, then the Board of Adjustment is the proper body that can hear any appeal to a staff's determination. But we, I do not really anticipate anything like that going that far, but here again, unintended consequences, I don't have my crystal ball.
No, and none of us do. And that's just the kind of things I want to make sure we at least discuss tonight, that there are potential costs that could be incurred by an owner because of this.
Yes.
So I just wanted to throw that out there. Don't mean to take up everybody's time, but I have quite a list here. I've been through this several times.
Thank you for going through it several times.
I appreciate that. I also noticed that in some of the mixed-use area where the commercial was, most everything, a drive-thru window wasn't allowed. Pharmacy, I think, was one that you could have a drive-thru window. That's a bit of a concern for me, and the fact that there are some businesses, let's say a bank, for instance, that, I mean, they have to have a drive-up window, unless there are an ATM location, you know, or they're not going to build there. I promise you that. You know, so, you know, there's some things there that need, I'm sure y'all thought about and talked through, but, you know, just because we say no drive-throughs, well, that could really limit what could go in there commercially, and maybe that's the intent here. But, you know, I think that's something we all need to be cognizant of, that if we restrict it too much, nothing will happen. It's just nature of that beast. So I'm just throwing that out. Personally, I think that 2,000 square feet is too small in the maximum square footage for standalone commercial. A pharmacy typically, and I've built several, are anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 feet. And so that may be something we need to look at and adjust. The parking requirements, I understand, want to get the parking out from in front. Sometimes you just can't do that. And if there is a vehicle where it could be changed or amended on a project-by-project basis, then maybe that's the answer to that. Can lots be combined? I noticed that there was something said in there about, you know, 50-foot lot maximum with one structure on it. What if you do want to do a three or four-unit, if you will, commercial building with different uses or different businesses in each one? You're not going to get that on, you're not going to get any commercial building on a 50-foot lot anyway. So how would that be handled, Paula?
I'm pulling up, but that, was that in the overlay?
Yeah, it was in the mixed-use overlay, I believe.
Yeah, let me find it right quickly while... Minimum lot width along the street, not maximum.
Okay.
Minimum is 50 feet for interior lots, or 60 feet for corner lots, so that's just a minimum.
That's a minimum. I missed that. And again, I guess, kind of the last of my questions, I just, I wanted to make sure that during this polling process, which a lot of this criteria is based on, that it was, you know, a true representation of the folks that live there every day or work there. You know, I think possibly that the data could be skewed some if you're not careful. And so, you know, I want to be careful that, at least personally, I don't put too much stake in those graphs, just because I don't know who exactly was there doing. And so, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank y'all for your indulgence.
Were the surveys sent out to the registered homeowners or just the addresses in the vicinity?
It was sent out to residents at that, at the address of the property within the study area and the notification area, and it was also sent out to property owners in the study area and notification area. So we had, you know, we were sending letters to California, Colorado, Pennsylvania as the out-of-town landowners in that area, but also, if there was a mailbox at that house that was on that property, they were getting notice as well.
Because it says that 65% of the residents in the vicinity are renters rather than owners.
And in the study area itself, yes. And that is actually typical here in Stillwater. The respondents, however, to the survey was the majority owner-occupied of the respondents, but keep in mind, the respondents were anybody throughout the entire community. So of those in the actual study area, the study area is pretty indicative to the rest of the community, highest percentage of rental occupancy. And we only had, we had some of the current resident at that address letters returned to us. A lot of the houses were vacant for whatever reason, so the mail could not be picked up, and the postal service knew that there was no one living in that house. But we had a, we had a number of renters correspond with us also, either at the input meetings or via email.
And was there a marked difference in opinion among renter or community versus owner-occupied?
We didn't drill down. We could drill down in the surveys and just, you know, pick the responses of everybody that is marked as a, it would be an owner or resident is how we classified the category. So without them marking, I own or I rent in particular, then we wouldn't have that information. But we could do that, we did not.
Any other questions for Paula?
I realize that this is a lot of information to pass on to y'all Friday, when we got it sent out. We do appreciate y'all taking the time and going through this. This was, as I have mentioned a couple of times, this was an exciting process for staff. We have done the overall comprehensive plan, and then we did the corridor redevelopment plan up around the university where Form-based code is applied. But we had not had a recent opportunity to do just a small neighborhood, portion of a neighborhood scale, study to get a feel. One of the things that, and I reflected some of this in my report, but one of the things that we saw was folks who had never introduced themselves to each other found common goals and common objectives. So now they have built those relationships. So if nothing else comes out of this, there's a lot of more intricate weaving of humanity in this neighborhood and for Stillwater, and I think we can all benefit from it. So if y'all have no other questions for me, then let you have it.
Appreciate that. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item, please step forward, state your name and address. To speak in favor of this item?
What would they be speaking in favor of?
Well, if you would like, oh, let's rephrase that. If you would like to voice your opinion, come on up one at a time, state your name, give us your address, and let's talk about it.
My name is John Pollak. I live at 1106 South Adams. So I am in the midst of what could be a mixed-use overlay district. I first looked at the property in 2010, and I always tried to do my homework, so I went down to City Hall and sat down with a city employee, and they showed me the zoning, the long-range plan, everything that I would need to know. It was interesting that no mention was made of the hospital expansion at that time. And of course, that's driven a lot of change. We know it has. You know, in my perfect world, everything would stay residential in my neighborhood. It would be decent homes owned and lived in by families. And one of my neighbors would be Andy Griffith, and the other one would be the Cleavers. But I'm also a realist, and I know change happens, and, you know, it can be good. The overlay... happens, and, you know, it can be good. The overlay drafts, because they're drafts at this point, have some, have some good valid points in them, I think. And, but the devil's in the details. They're not a finished product yet. Would you agree, Paula?
Mr. Pollak, if you would, address the county.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the commission. We'd appreciate that.
That's okay. Anyway, I don't think they're a finished product yet. Understandably, it's a lot of work. Two things that I think would be very important if the mixed-use overlay is adopted is, of course, the case-by-case review of business applications, building applications, zoning applications. And part of that is because, once this gets started, I don't know how fast or far it'll go. I would personally hate to get overwhelmed in my own neighborhood and be the only house left on the block, for instance. But having said all that, I would rather live next to a nice, well-maintained business than a rundown ramshackle house. And there are some houses getting in kind of bad shape. And that's, that's not exactly had anything to do with zoning, but it's just life. So I just would ask you all to try to think this through, the consequences and how this might move and how fast and how pervasive anything could happen in the future. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Pollak?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone would like to step up and go next? It'd be a great time to do that. State your name and address, please.
I'm Jerry Owl, and I live at 910 South Stanley, which is north of the area under study. But I'd like to just add to what John Pollak has spoken about. And I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to express my appreciation to the planning staff, and I, eventually to you all, I'm assuming, for the, anyway, for the planning staff, for the effort that they have made in engaging the community. Certainly, I'm one of those members who was not particularly engaged in the beginning. And this whole process of looking over some rezoning has caused me to become much more familiar with my neighborhood and to meet my neighbors. I usually jog and walk from Western to Duck and between 12th and 9th, so I'm becoming more and more familiar with the neighborhood. And because of these issues, I've had a chance to speak with a lot of my neighbors personally and to try to get them also engaged in this whole process. So I really do appreciate the effort that has been made. And I'm, but I would like to, I'm just from having spoken with all of the people I've spoken with, and I know John Pollak had a meeting of the, a part of the neighbors in that whole area, and I delivered invitations to that meeting. So I really had a chance to speak with 20, at least 20 people in my neighborhood. And I would say that the consensus and the response is that they would like to leave the area as is, and that individual requests for zoning would be a lot more realistic, perhaps. And I'm wondering about you all. Have you had a chance to really, to really look over the maps and to, in detail, go over the two options? Because I know last night, and it was only last night, I grant that I started to look over the maps, and I started to ask questions, like how did those two red areas get into the option one, which I hadn't noticed that before. And I'm sure they were there, but I hadn't really spent a lot of time. And I am obviously not well-versed in city planning, and I have no idea of the possibilities. That's why, again, I'm wondering, just for you, if it wouldn't be better to spend more time, and for all of us, to spend more time on this issue and to continue to try to engage the members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If anyone else would like to speak, come on up.
Could I like a comment on one of the boards?
Does anyone else plan on speaking tonight? Okay. Let's let everyone else speak, Mr. Pollak, and then give us a chance to...
Roger Gose, 1120 East Cornell. In the staff report, it looks like under discussion, the outline below, the planning commission is asked to make a determination as of findings. Is a rezoning process necessary for the underlying, underlying property at public hearing? Then it says would be held. I would think if we're going to put the overlay requirements on there, when that's presented to staff, like a planned unit development, but it's, I think it would still need to come back some public notice, you know, some public hearing, because it is a rezoning in effect. I think by this, you've said these uses are okay in here, but at some point, I think, city council's the one, really, that's charged with zoning, that they would need to rezone it, reauthorize the use or special use permit. So I don't, I think that's up for you guys to discuss. That's my two cents on that. What is a proper size limitation for freestanding, single-unit building? I thought during the polling, and I haven't read Paula's packet, but when I was in there, I thought it came out over 3,000 feet somewhere was the size building. 2,000-square-foot building's really small. It's a lot smaller than anything on Main Street that, you know, those lots are 25 feet wide by 140 feet deep, and a lot of the businesses on Main Street fill up that whole block, or that whole lot. So I think, I'd like for you to consider that. What is the proper size limitation on multi-unit buildings? Anything's possible there. That may be a hard one for you to come up with. And then, should increased screening for dumpsters be specified? I think screening ought to be specified, and then, but, I mean, what's increased screening? Most people that care about the value of the property are now putting a nice wooden fence of some type around their dumpsters, or brick, or something like that. So I think the square footage of the buildings needs to be increased. And the multifamily, I don't think anything over two stories ought to be in that whole area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Step forward.
My name's Michael Oliver. Live at 1123 South Gray, which is inside the study area. My wife and I purchased the home in 2010 because of the neighborhood, how it exists. So I have mixed feelings about the overlays. I like that the conservation overlay is there. I understand the mixed-use overlay. However, I think the lines for that may not be appropriate. Where it is now, from Blakely over to the end of the studying area near Washington, would disrupt the continuity of the existing residential areas. I also have concerns that the mixed use and businesses moving in could affect property values and desirability of the housing in that area. I think that should be considered. My opinion is that the area should stay the same and encourage renewal and development of residential areas, so no businesses. I think it's a great area to live and work in Stillwater. It's accessible to the major highways through town, and it's within walking distance of the hospital and several of the other smaller businesses that are off to the west and north of the area. I think consideration of property values, residents living next to businesses, and how that can affect future desirability of the area should be considered. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I usually have a prepared statement. I don't tonight. I was, and this is not a criticism of the staff in any way, I was very disappointed in the process to come about with the decisions that were made. How I was disappointed was I didn't feel like that I got adequate educational tools to click the little clicker when we were asked certain things. Like, one of the things that was brought up about the square foot, when I was asked to pick between this-size building, that-size building, I'm not very visual. If someone had said the neighborhood market is this size, maybe we would have had a little bit better understanding. It just went way too quickly, and I imagine when you all struggled with it, we were taking a lot of citizens that didn't have background in planning, planning terms. I think the people that understood what was going on was our outstanding planning staff. So I ended up with more confusion than anything else, and if you're confused, I understand that also. I think the overlays are confusing within themselves. I think we asked, could we amend the overlays, make the conservation overlay larger, the mixed use smaller? That didn't appear to be an option for me. So I hope, I hope that you give a lot of consideration to this, and maybe you're as confused and have as little background as I do in all the different definition of planning terms. You just kind of need a planning dictionary.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you give your name and address?
Oh, Shirley Week, 71 University Circle. When the city commission set, outlined their goals, number six of that goal was preserve livability in Stillwater's strong and distinctive neighborhoods. I think that you are, tonight, we're just on the forefront of talking about neighborhoods. I think we're thinking differently about neighborhoods, and this maybe is the first one to go. I think we're getting short on neighborhoods, and what is a good quality neighborhood? And I think a neighborhood is something that we all share in common. It's a place that we belong, that we feel comfortable and safe in. I think we're going to have to go back, maybe instead of forwards, and look and define what are neighborhoods, and how are we going to go about making changes in those neighborhoods. So I would urge you to think carefully, and maybe you can give some insight. Can we amend these conservation districts to have different sizes to them? Can we make the conservation one larger and the mixed-use ones less? How did we come about with those boundaries? I think there were some things that we just never got to because of the shortness of the time. In the future, I would recommend that we have more education before we make decisions, and I would encourage you to have more education before you make the decision. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Julie Couch. I live at 901 South Gray. We have lived in this neighborhood since 1973, so I'm quite familiar with the changes. All I want to say is I second what the last two speakers have said.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a statement? Mr. Pollak will indulge your remark.
I just wanted to clarify something. Jerry spoke of a side meeting, and you probably had no idea what that was about, but personally, I was really disappointed at the turnout. She told you how many letters they sent out and what the attendance was. And we were trying to get some people involved, tell them what was going on. Their input was important, and try to get them to show up at the polling meetings and at this meeting. I really think these processes work a lot better when more people are involved. We got limited results from that meeting, but I just wanted you to understand what that was, because that just kind of came out.
Appreciate that.
My name is Bobby Douglas, and I stay on that little titch you see at Washington Street. So I just want to understand something here. If you vote one where nothing happens, I was in the process of trying to rezone that little piece of property. I am the neighborhood. No houses around me. So I need to know, how does that affect me? I mean, am I back to square one, trying to rezone my property as an individual property owner, or does it not allow me to try to rezone my property at all, or what?
I would encourage you to go ahead and finish your remark, and then we'll call staff up, and they'll address your question if you have anything else you'd like to say in your remaining time.
I went to all the meetings and everything. I would prefer they would be mixed use, you know, and everything. So, but I just wanted to get some answers to that.
Certainly.
That question there. So if staff needs to do that, then that's fine.
Mr. Douglas, can I ask what you were planning rezoning to?
Well, office with a special use.
You came before the Board of Adjustments. Did you come to the Board of Adjustments about that?
I don't know. I came to a meeting here about that.
Yeah.
Barbecue, right?
Yeah, it's a barbecue place and everything. So I was just trying to figure out where I stand on this situation, you know. So if staff needs to tell me, then, you know, that's a question.
Did you happen to bring barbecue with you to?
I could have, it'd been amazing. Yeah.
Twice. Twice. No barbecue.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Anyone else wish to make a comment? All righty. We'll go ahead and call Ms. Paula forward to address some of the questions.
Okay. I certainly appreciate, as we have through this process, of the citizens being willing to voice their opinions and give their input. That did help guide staff in being able to present options to the planning commission for your consideration. So one of the items, and I will just back it up right quickly, if Jasmine can turn on the video. The top two bullets in the further discussion items is actually whether or not to adjust the boundary of the conservation overlay district and adjust the boundary of the mixed-use overlay district. So those are for discussion and consideration by the planning commission. There were a couple of those that not giving the planning commission a place to start seems very unfair to your staff. It's our objective to present you with this much information and a starting point that you can move forward from. So that's why in the meetings, we did not adjust those. The opportunity to adjust those is being requested here at this, at this meeting, as are the other items that are on the list. So to Mr. Douglas's rezoning request, that rezoning request was tabled, it came through the planning commission with a specific use permit. The rezoning was tabled at the plan, at the city council meeting because this process had already been directed by city council to staff. So his property, the little tag-out on the eastern, very eastern boundary, that's the purpose for it being included. It's the only parcel on the east side of Washington Street that is included in the evaluation of this entire process, and it is shown in the two land use plans that you see before you. The one of no change, it does not negate his request, as it has already moved forward to city council. City council will be considering this, as I said in the, in the outline, at their May 15th meeting, that is, with the recommendation coming out of the planning commission, and And Mr. Douglas's rezoning request is also on the agenda, scheduled on the agenda for that same meeting. It would be heard after the 12th Avenue land use plan. So, it is moving forward. The specific use request would come in after the determination of the City Council on his rezoning, because we can't issue a specific use permit for property where that use is not even allowed under the zoning that is in place at the time. The zoning has to go through the normal legal process, in other words. So... Anything else while I am up here?
It was the question, or at least it seemed like there was a question, that said, "Are we rezoning the area within the overlay? Or are future changes in zoning still to be brought forward to us?" I think that was kind of the question, and I wanted to get clear on that.
You had it up on the screen just a moment ago.
Yes, Jasmine will pop it back up. It's the third bullet, where it's highlighted rezoning process necessary with overlay district. Couple of ways of approaching this. Usually, when an overlay district is assigned to a certain area, those properties that are included in that overlay district do not have to come back through any rezoning process because it's understood by the public process to apply the overlay district that those uses are allowed, or those criteria are allowed on those properties. A planned unit development is a little different. Our code and planned unit developments are individual property specific, not areas such as an overlay district would be, in this consideration. A planned unit development is, the applicant is required to make sure that the underlying zoning district, whether it's RSS, RSL, AG, CS, office, industrial, whatever, where the use that they intend is allowed. So, if it's currently zoned office, but they want to put a strip mall, a shopping center on that property that's not allowed in the office district, they would have to come through the rezoning process to rezone it to commercial, general, or commercial shopping, and then ask, as part of the rezoning, to apply that planned unit development. Again, those are very specific individual properties. An example of an overlay district is Westwood and the Business Improvement District. The requirements on Westwood, you don't have to rezon your property for that overlay to apply. In the Business Improvement District, you don't have to rezon your property in order for that overlay to apply. That is a question up to the Planning Commission this evening. Is that public rezoning process still going to be a necessary requirement if the overlay district is applied upon your recommendation and whatever City Council's action is? Clear as mud?
That's very clear to me. A mixed use overlay on the west side, it's right next to the conservation overlay. Is there a fence requirement or screening requirement that's already included in this plan?
Between the overlay districts, no, there is not. We have not proposed that when you're at the perimeter of either one of the overlay districts, abutting something not in the overlay, or abutting an adjacent overlay district. We did not put in any fencing or additional screening requirements, although that's an excellent point, but Tom is going to correct me. It is required, as typical, the additional increased screening over and above what our current code says, when you're next to two-family or single-family uses. But if this property was vacant, you wouldn't have that screening requirement. But I do think that's an excellent point, Commissioner Booker.
But if we leave, if we leave the zoning as is underneath, and it doesn't go with the overlay, where each individual thing has to be brought back, then that requirement could be required at that point. Is that correct? I probably double-talked that really bad. I'm sorry. Do you understand where I'm headed there with that, Paula?
Let me see if I understand your question, Commissioner Lane. Are you asking that if the land use plan map that proceeds to City Council is alternative one, don't make any changes to the land use plan map, and someone comes in with a rezoning request, can additional requirements be made on that rezoning request? Is that your question?
Not really.
Okay.
Would it be required to have screening there at that point? If they're commercial?
Certainly, yes. If they're changing the zoning of the property from RSS to office, the office property, if it's approved, has a screening component and requirement because it is now property that is not zoned, that residential, and to screen and buffer the impacts of that office zoning property from the residential. Yes.
Okay. But if we leave, if we do, say, if you have the overlay approved, and you don't have to rezon it underneath, again, is there screening required at that point?
There is between the mixed use overlay and residential and two-family uses.
As part of the overlay?
As part of the overlay proposal, yes.
So, within that mixed use overlay, if there was residential next to commercial, there would be screening required?
Yes.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions for Paula?
Can you say something about how you arrived at the boundaries between the two overlays?
Yes, in looking at the, and I'll move it to the overlay there, that between. In looking at the, where the greatest, from a planning standpoint, not from a personal standpoint, or live in a house, or rent a house, or, you know, operate a business, or any of those standpoints, but from a planning standpoint, the greatest concentration of only single-family residential is where the neighborhood conservation overlay district was proposed, is proposed. In the mixed use overlay district, that is already duplexes, a planned unit development, it abuts some multifamily, the assisted living center outside of the overlay area. It is immediately adjacent to what's, the hospital is doing on the south side. There's more vacant properties in this mixed use overlay district proposal area, and it goes over to Washington Street, which is a transportation system link, a major transportation system link, to the north side of Stillwater from this area.
An aerial, if you either drive out there, I did both, but if you drive out there and drive it, or if you look at an aerial view of it, it makes a lot of sense where that line was. I thought the line was about right, personally. Now, obviously, I don't live in the mixed use, I don't have a house in the mixed use area, which I can see that point. But when you look at, like Paula said, the empty land and potential, maybe, developed land, right, that would do sooner than maybe the other area, then it made a lot of sense where the line was, to me.
I noticed there is an email also about property taxes, that properties within the Business Improvement District have higher property taxes, and a resident was, or a property owner, I think, was concerned about change in property taxes. Would it affect that at all?
There is not, unlike the Business Improvement District that has a generation of funds to make improvements solely within that Business Improvement District, that is not a proposal in any consideration that we have before you this evening, nor would we recommend it for primarily a residential neighborhood that is seeing some changing and developing.
Thank you.
And I was gonna pull up right quickly, if y'all can give me just a moment, the aerial, just to show. And should have had this already brought up.
Love that tool, by the way, and I don't know if a lot of people ever use that, but...
Well, if they're watching me, they can replay it and learn how.
It's a great tool.
Thank you for that. I'll make sure IT and GIS, or GIS folks hear that. So, while this is coming up, are there any other questions that you have for me on any of the overlay districts, how we arrived at the proposal?
I guess the 2,000 square foot, I've heard lots of comments about it, and to me, that seems like a low number. So, did you, did the staff come up with that number, or was it through public input, or...
Again, it was a place to start, a starting point. As you can see in the voting documents, there was a question on the, limiting the square footage, and it ranged anywhere from 1,500 to 2,500 specifically, and then larger. And the majority were in the, not specifically the word larger, but larger than 2,000 square foot of the unit sizes. And just a discussion, one of the buildings on the south side of 12th Avenue, the chiropractic office, is just shy of 2,000 square feet. So, that gives something to judge by. The new building that has the steeper pitched roof is 3,500, I'm guessing, I'm looking back there at Patty. So, there's quite a range just on the south side, but that can give a visual of, oh, now I know what 2,000 square feet looks like and how it feels, type of thing. So, yes, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, this is the aerial of the property, the study area, and this little street, it's really hard to see. Let me try and zoom in some more. Okay, this street moving through is Blakely Street. So, from this parcel where the tree shadow is greatest, from that parcel up to 11th, over to Washington, and include Mr. Douglas's individual house, surrounded by city-owned park on the north, south, and east side, and open space and a parking lot on the west side. Then it comes down to 12th Avenue and runs along 12th. So, that's the boundary. You can see, this is the property that the City Council tabled, consideration of the rezoning. It's this parcel immediately adjacent to the trees with the great shadows. And there are some other larger lots that do have some opportunity for some form of development. I will say that there's quite a bit of floodplain in the area, and the cost to develop in the floodplain is pretty great, because there are national standards and city standards that have to be met. That's one of the reasons that you don't see a whole lot of single-family housing development in that floodplain area, because the floodplain's there and the requirement to carry flood insurance, but also the cost to develop in the floodplain area, because of the elevating or whatnot that has to be done to those properties. So, from Blakely Street, the western boundary of that property west, as you can see, it is residential, single-family residential neighborhood, and therefore, the reason of picking that as pretty much the dividing line. Again, it's up before the Planning Commission this evening for any recommendation, if you choose to go with alternative two and the overlay districts. Did this help pulling the aerial up so you could, okay, good. Anything else while I'm here? If not, I will move on to alternatives.
We'll take alternatives.
Okay. So, as outlined in your Planning Commission report, you can find that the comp plan and the text adjustments are needed, recommend land use plan alternative two, and the two overlay districts as presented. Start and see, okay, maybe it won't move. You can find that the comp plan and text adjustments are needed, recommend land use plan alternative two, and the two overlay districts as amended. That would be as you, the Planning Commission, make any adjustments to the text in those overlay districts that it has been presented before you this evening. The third alternative is that no comp plan adjustment is needed, so it would stay as is. However, you could recommend that the neighborhood conservation overlay district only move forward to the City Council, along with alternative one, no changes to the land use plan. Or, you don't see a need for any changes at all, and then there, in essence, not a no recommendation, but a recommendation of, don't take any action, Council, just leave it the way it is, coming forth from you. Questions on the alternatives? Okay, thank you.
Can you... Can you put up the questions to the Planning Commissions that we need to address as a reminder, the boundary? Yes, that's it.
And these are in, it's gonna change on me. Can you still see that, sort of? Yeah, I tried to highlight the keywords in there. In a different color.
Alrighty, guys, any discussion? Want to take them bullet by bullet?
Bullet number one. Neighborhood conservation overlay district proper, or does it need to be adjusted? I believe there's a good rationale for both bullet one and bullet two, and I believe, if we're gonna go with an overlay district, and I am in favor of going with the overlay district, I believe those are proper.
Any discussion? Disagreement there?
No, I feel fine with the boundaries the way they are. I just wanted to hear the reasons for them.
Then we'll drop down to the next bullet. Adjust the boundary for the neighborhood mixed use overlay district? Any issues there?
Kinda goes with the first one, doesn't it?
We may come back to that. We'll drop down to three. Rezoning process necessary for the overlay district. It does, I can see staff's point, that it seems like we would be doing the same thing twice. I see the importance of doing it, but it does seem a bit redundant, too.
On the other hand, I feel like if there is a momentum in the neighborhood to kind of coalesce as a neighborhood, and a community that's more interested in what's going on, I think there might be a big benefit for the neighborhood to have a forum for public hearing. I'm not sure if there really would be that if there weren't a continued rezoning process.
So, I'm thinking that, let's say it's single-family, residential, single-family, and somebody wants to put commercial in the overlay, they would still have to come for a rezon, to make a zoning request? Or is it, it would not, as long as it fits within the overlay, whenever the commercial thing is?
From what I understand, that's the question. Either we can say...
You got the question, Dan.
You guys don't mind, let's speak into our mics. I have a feeling we have people watching at home that would appreciate that.
Yeah, you did exactly. There are two options, I guess, is a better way to say it. Yeah, you did exactly. There are two options, I guess is a better way to say.
So what's everyone's thoughts on that?
You know, I agree, having more public input is good. But again, if we specify the uses, I don't know that there's a need, you know? I hear what you're saying, too, Ariel, that, you know, public input's good, but I-
I believe the uses are particular enough, that I don't believe we have to go to zoning if it's not within those defined uses, then they're not an overlay district, and they have to do that, public hearing. But I think within, that we're allowing what's proper in that area without going through zoning. Now, I brought up my question in terms of the boundary between the two districts. My concern with the boundary to two districts, if I interpret the comments correctly, is if I'm in the boundary, and I'm in the mixed-use area, and the property next to me doesn't have a home on it yet, I don't have to put a fence up there? And I want a fence up there between the two boundaries. Whether it's currently a home or not, because I'm expecting, hoping, that this promotes development of homes in that area, and I want a fence up there, is my thought process, which really doesn't address that question, but I wanted to cover it while adding my mind.
No, I get that. It would work if a house was behind you, even if it was right into the other, the conservation district. But, again, to the side of you, sure, it wouldn't, you wouldn't have to have street.
The people that stand to benefit most are the owners of the parcel 1121 and 1220, presumably.
Yes.
Which are both vacant, I think. So should they be doing something to protect the people that are in the conservation overlay?
In my opinion, yes, that they ought to put, that we ought to require, if they develop that property, to put a fence all along that area, in accordance with the current code requirements, in the mixed-use area, if you're doing something that's a commercial next to a residential.
And that fence would come at the developer's expense, not the resident's expense.
Well, so if we left the underlying zoning on it, which is RSS, then that would automatically happen, if you built commercial.
Yes.
Is that true, Paula? I'm sorry.
That is correct. The current landscaping requirements in city code, overlay district set aside, the current landscaping requirements are determined by adjacent zoning districts, not uses. So if the underlying zoning remains RSS on an adjacent parcel, whether that residential use is there or not, and then a non-residential enterprise goes in on, in the mixed-use overlay district, then that would trigger the additional landscaping and screening requirements for that RSS property. The additional catch that is placed in that mixed-use overlay, as Tom pointed out, is if there is a single or two-family house, also. So it's not just a zoning, side by side, it's also if that is a residential use on the adjacent property as well.
Parcel 1121, which is right next to, I will call the pink area, the conservation overlay area, that parcel-
There are two parcels, 1121? Oh, sorry, that big one, yes.
That parcel is- The overlay district would be for additional developments on properties.
Yes.
The parcel 1121 is developed in duplexes, and there is a planned unit development overlay on that individual property as it stands. If they go to develop that property further, or redevelop it in some form or fashion, with the overlay district as proposed applying, then that would have a requirement for additional landscaping and screening.
Okay, thank you.
Would that landscaping and screening go with the length of that property?
If it was redeveloped, yes.
Yes.
And that's what I wanted, so it's already there.
That's pretty good protection, yeah.
Yes.
The only manner in which it would not, would be if they came in and subdivided, and then only developed one of those new lots, and not the full extent of the property as it stands now.
And then the fence would just go in front of the new development?
Correct. I will get y'all back on your discussion items.
Thank you.
Yes.
So it sounds like, it sounds like we're okay, then, with no rezoning necessary in the overlay district, correct?
I'm not. I just, I'm worried, because it's, I feel like a lot of the public comment was, we want to have a voice in what goes in our neighborhood. And I'm worried that the overlay is taking away the voice that they have now. And a lot of the comment was, we don't want to change, and if we put in an overlay, and there's no forum for public comment, if commercial uses come in, it's taking away what public forum residents have now, as to what goes in their neighborhood.
Okay. Maximum size? I remembered half of it.
Paula, did you have something to say regarding that?
I did, just to Commissioner Ross's statement. There's a couple of, there's two options that I could see, if the commission votes, and this is just throwing out for your information, if the commission votes that there continues to be a need for a public process in the overlay district. If we're talking primarily the mixed-use overlay district, then you've got two options. Have the boundary established, but the overlay does not apply until the individual property owner comes in and requests the overlay to be applied to their property. The other option would be what Mr. Ghost mentioned, similar to a planned unit development, making it very specific, rezone the property, the underlying property, to whatever classification that their intended use allows, and as a part of that, ask for the overlay district to be applied. Therefore, no rezoning could occur without the overlay district being applied also. That would be a companion request. So those are the two options. A rezoning of property just to overlay district, or the underlying zoning with overlay district applied, similar to a putt. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, Paula. But either of those options sounds reasonable to me.
Reasonable. Mike, you were addressing the maximum-
Maximum size of single-unit building, I believe a maximum size, appropriate size would be 3,000 square foot.
What's the impetus behind encouraging smaller sizes? Is it to dissuade, sorry? To, so to dissuade, for example, large banks going and putting drive-throughs and things like that, to keep a more neighborhood feel? Wouldn't it be better to keep them smaller, to keep a more neighborhood feel?
I think the point of this was to encourage development, and if we restrict the maximum square footage to something under 2,000 square feet, there's only a handful of uses that can operate in 2,000 square feet. And a lot of those uses, if you think about them, tend to be, in my opinion, some of the ones that I wouldn't want in my neighborhood.
Right.
That's my opinion, but I think maybe that's what they were-
I mean, personally, I'd rather have a, I'd rather live next door to a dentist's than a large, I don't know.
A large what?
Something bigger, I don't know.
You know, even, even, I do a lot of dental, I build a lot of dental clinics, and they're anywhere from 26 to 3,000 square feet.
Right.
So I agree with Mike. We've got to, and 3,000, I could probably live with. I'd have it bigger than that if it was mine. But you're gonna need 3,000 feet to make anything, you know, any, a dental clinic, sandwich shop, I mean, it's gonna take 3,000 feet.
So do you, do you feel that this area is gonna become entirely commercial, then, rather than mixed use?
Don't know.
Does anyone have a, an idea, what they'd like there?
We're not zoning it commercial, so we're not saying that it has to. We're just trying to encourage development to a part of town that drastically needs, in our opinion, something to move it forward.
So you want me to take out my crystal ball and make my projection?
Yes. There will be 11 houses, 13 dental clinics.
The only thing I'm seeing about 2,000 square feet is 2,000 square feet for each business and buildings with more than one commercial space. So it's not for an individual building, but it's-
I thought it was.
Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
Okay.
Okay, try before then, okay. I mean, I, I think 2,000 is fairly small. I'd be okay with 3,000.
Is anybody writing this stuff down?
Probably should be.
Ashley is, she's gotta hope that.
What do y'all think on this?
I was thinking 3,500 square feet, myself, but if 3,000's better than 2,000.
Three is fine.
I mean, it seems like what the overlay is shooting for is a commercial development if it happens consistent with the look of residential. And so I would just say, you know, I would hope it would be a building size that's consistent with the size of homes. And I think a 2,000 square foot home would also be fairly small.
3,000 would be doable.
What is the proper size limit of multi-unit building? Now, what is in the write-up? You've done a good job interpreting the write-up, so what's in the write-up for the multi-unit building?
I don't remember that one.
Does anyone, the staff, remember that?
2,000 per unit.
Per unit.
2,000 per unit for multi?
Yeah.
Dusty, what are your thoughts on that?
I think it has to be 3,000. Now, if we want to set a maximum building size, like you were saying, you know, then, then fine, I'm okay with that, too, but-
Is that the question? Is the question, now, I'm a, there's certain bulk and open space requirements on each a lot, right? So-
Lot coverage requirements.
So there's already a lot coverage requirements, which has the maximum multi-use, so to me, whether it's a single unit or a multi-unit building, it ought to be 3,000 square foot per-
I can live with that.
So just assuming that, given lot size, it would be unlikely that we would have a building that's gonna include six 3,000 square foot units, or something like that?
It could happen.
It could happen on two of those lots, but most of the lots would be a lot less than that.
Good example. It was, if we're not even talking about commercial, let's say a duplex, it's gonna need 4,000 feet, which would be at least two, I mean, that's right at that 2,000 foot per unit.
Yeah.
And that's a fairly small duplex, so-
3,000 seems appropriate per unit.
If we, the smaller, the, well, that's maybe not the best statement. You want nicer things in your neighborhood, nicer square footage, nicer neighbors. If we were to make this small, you know, there's a better chance that undesirables could move in, whatever those may be.
I don't know that size is necessarily an indication of desirable versus undesirable.
There's less undesirables renting 4,000 square foot houses in town than there are apartment complexes, apartments.
I rent a very small apartment, and I think I'm very desirable.
Is everyone agreeing with 3,000 square foot?
Yes.
Okay. You can do your rationale for how you came up with 3,000 separately, but we all agree 3,000 per unit is acceptable. And now we get into the good discussion on alcohol. Do you want to go to that next?
Well, did we ever set a maximum, or do we need to set?
I don't think we should need to set a maximum, because it's already by, in the code.
Lot, land, you know, lot coverage always probably drives that.
That's right. Will drive that.
I'm good with that.
What kind of alcohol establishment should be allowed in the mixed-use overlay? I'll let somebody else go for that one.
Can someone explain to me what the different types would be?
You have your regular bars, and this is only because staff told us, not because I'm an expert, by any means. You have your wine bars, you know, a regular bar, a beer garden, which, you know, tend to be outdoors, have an outdoor space, at least.
Real bar, you know, has hard liquor, allegedly, not that I've ever been there, but-
Come on, be honest. I've been in a real bar!
But, no, I think that's kind of the difference, so you know, full bar has that, maybe a wine and beer bar does not serve hard liquor.
Right.
And then a beer garden might only serve beer, I guess. I don't know.
And is there something that says you have to serve food with the alcohol, or?
Not in the zoning restriction.
That's out of my pay grade.
That's just for the grease.
Paula, you want to come up and help us out here?
Yes, I can address that. That actually came up at the input meetings also. There is a state law requirement that says an establishment serving alcohol cannot locate within a certain distance of a public school, place of worship. It has a list of uses that it cannot locate within a certain distance of. But the way that the establishment serving alcohol is determined is if the majority of income is from food, like a restaurant that may have a bar within it, if the majority of the income is from food, it does not classify as an alcohol establishment. An alcohol establishment is one that has the majority of the income from the service of alcohol. So a liquor store, a bar, a wine bar, those type of enterprises where the primary focus is just on alcohol, low or high point, that's where that distance requirement comes into play. That would still be in effect here, because this overlay district would not negate state law. So that would be evaluated whenever anybody came in with a use for their property.
So the question here is, are we gonna allow a bar, or a beer garden, or wine, or not allow it, which doesn't mean there can't still be alcohol, it just has to be a restaurant where more than 50% of the revenue is from food?
That is correct. The way our zoning is classified, the uses, beverage service includes coffee shop, smoothie shop, bar. So you have a broad inclusion of different types with different effects and impacts of beverage service. So I believe that is why the alcohol issue came up in the first place, because it was just lumped into that, what about beverage service? Would a coffee shop be a neighborhood-scale, non-residential use? More than likely, yeah. A smoothie shop, more than likely, yeah. A bar, whoa, wait a minute, let's talk about that one. So that's why it's here before you this evening, because it's categorized as a beverage service. It is up to the planning commission, you have the right to say, no bars. But you can also say alcohol in restaurant or primary food service. But you can also say alcohol in restaurant or primary food service.
I'm in favor of no bars, but allow alcohol in restaurants. Is that an acceptable part of a motion? Is that a legal question?
I'm writing all of this down, so if y'all wanna get through this list...
Okay.
Then, we can go back to what the commission's discussion and direction is, to form a motion with the help of Mr. Attorney.
What about a liquor store?
I don't think that's included in the permitted uses.
I would not be in favor of a liquor store in this area.
Just throwing it out there.
Is it included in the permitted uses?
Paula, can we have a liquor store in the permitted uses of this zoning?
It would need to be specifically prohibited in the overlay district, because it falls under retail in our zoning category.
So, we could have a liquor store, but not a bar?
Unless you wanted to prohibit a liquor store.
I feel okay with moving forward without allowing a bar. If we were coming into vacant land where there wasn't a neighborhood with families who purchased possibly to not be beside a bar, then I may feel different, but anyone who specifically wants to purchase to be near a bar probably wouldn't have bought here anyway, so I'm okay with that.
You feel the same way about a liquor store?
Restaurant that can serve alcohol, but not a bar.
Do I feel the same way about a liquor store? Yeah, I do.
So, we would specifically say no bars and no liquor stores?
When we get to, I, when we get to the motion, we'll get into that, but yes, I'm in favor of not allowing liquor stores in this area. I'm in favor of screening dumpsters.
Yes.
Yes.
How would we like to do that?
Tastefully.
Well, right now, the architectural requirement is stone or brick or wood, zero. I would like it to be screened either with a wood fence, stone, or brick.
That's fair.
Yeah.
For new development, correct?
Yes. We, I'm assuming everything is, that's there is there, and...
Would there be any way that a current homeowner, who, could there be a way that they remodel, add-on, or do anything to their house where they would be required to now build a screen for...
Not in residential. You're not referring to residential, are you, Mike?
I am not.
Okay, it'd only be commercial uses.
I concur.
Okay, I'm gonna open Pandora's box here. Design requirements. I don't know that I'm fully in favor of design requirements in the mixed-use area. I'm okay with the existing neighborhood. I get it, we're trying to match the houses that are there, the lower roof pitches, the porches, but I'm just throwing it out that I don't know that I like that in the mixed-use area.
Why not?
Want y'all's thoughts?
Are there particular parts of it that, like, particular aspects of the list of...
Well, I mean, the roof pitch is fine, I, it's fine. And I do, I think the intent maybe more was to try to make any commercial building look more like residential, not necessarily even to match the houses that are there, but to be more of a residential style. And so, I understand that. I don't like the setback requirements, like your garage has to be set back five feet. I think that's a little intrusive, takes a little bit away from your freedom to do your design somewhat like you'd want it to. And again, this is in the mixed-use area. I'm totally okay with all the required, design requirements in the conservation overlay district, but I think we need a little more flexibility in the mixed-use.
So, would these design standards say somebody wanted to build a new residential building in the mixed-use overlay, would those design requirements apply to that as well? Yes?
Now, I'm just, that's my personal opinion. I'm just throwing it out here for discussion, so...
But these design requirements are surely to try and make sure that people don't, aren't just allowed to build awful, tasteless, pink monstrosities?
I can see anything about pink in there.
Do you think that, do you think that restrictions as are written will hamper development in the mixed-use?
Potentially. I don't have a problem with them being residential look. A lot like what's been built along 12th Street, all the individual offices, they're very residential looking to me. And I think it fits in well with the neighborhood, as far as that goes, again, personal opinion.
So, I read through these design standards two or three times, and I didn't see anything that didn't, I thought it was very good in terms of commercial to make it, to make sure we have something written down to make it look somewhat residential. So, can we go through this and explain to me what items?
Sure.
Like, designs, building front... I understand.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay. It's gotta have an entry door on the street side.
Don't agree. Again, personal opinion. I think you can put your door wherever you want it.
So... I have no problem with that.
You have no problem eliminating number one?
I don't.
That eliminates number two.
Well, I think you could say the front door must be accessed by a sidewalk, which it's gonna have to do that anyway by ADA requirements anyhow. In other words, just on number two, take out street, or street-facing, I'm sorry, would be the door entry, maybe.
So, if you have the door on the side of the building, then you need to have a sidewalk that goes up to that door.
Which you'd have to, anyway.
So, the primary entrance with...
Primary entrance.
Sidewalk?
Yeah, that would be a good way to say it.
Okay.
Number three is covered porch.
Paula, would you mind pulling these up, so others can follow along?
Excellent. Sway the chair.
Well, thank you.
The door must be sheltered by a covered porch. Do you have a problem?
Well, yeah, kind of, as opposed to an awning, or, I mean, why does it have to be a covered porch? I think you have to leave some of that criteria to the owner personally. So, again, I may be overreacting, so...
That's interesting. I always think of an awning as a covered porch-type area, so I think the door, okay.
Should we say covered porch or awning?
That's as big as I can get it.
Number four gives you more, yeah. And again, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a mole here, but that just kinda, it just sat bad with me, I just...
I guess my sense of porch is that there's something raised on, that you're stepping on, and it's covered, whereas an awning would just have the overhead covering.
Well, hopefully, to meet ADA, you don't have to step up, you...
True.
That's true.
Hopefully, everything's flat there, and it's porch area is a concrete area that's covered, and...
Okay.
I mean, it has to be a minimum of five feet out from the building, has to be at least 25 square feet in area.
Which number are we on, Dusty? I'd like to...
About four, five, six.
Four, the front porch may project into the front setback a maximum of five feet to supporting poles or columns, and eaves may project an additional 12 inches. Number five was also, the front porch must project from the building wall a minimum of five feet. Go ahead, guys, sorry about that.
So, are you in favor of eliminating one through six? Because there's gotta be a door, so whether the door's on the side or whatever. And then, and then number seven, each 10-foot of any facade with face of the street must have at least one doing no.
I just, I just don't know why we're having to do all that.
Paula, would you please come up and tell us your thoughts behind that?
Maybe I don't understand where it came from, I guess.
These are a lot of the components that you see in residential structures. In the neighborhood, you have a lot of residential structures with their primary entryway, the door facing the street, it has a porch, it has a covered porch. So, that's where the integration, addressing the concerns of the neighborhood, the integration of these non-residential structures into their neighborhood, again, so when you're driving by, it's not gonna look exactly like a residential house, more than likely. It won't feel like a residential house, more than likely, but it'll have semblance of a residential home. And that's the purpose of it. That's why this mixed-use overlay focuses on integrating the new development into the neighborhood, not sticking out like a sore thumb.
Were these things reasonably, specifically, if I say, brought up by the owners and residents of that area, asking us to take into consideration these specific things, so that they could live with what we're doing here?
No, this was drafted by staff. Our attempt to provide something that did address their concerns of integrating the structures into the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I guess I'm trying to imagine a building that didn't have any of these things, no street-side entrance, no covering over the door, no windows facing the street. It does look, in my mind, fairly out of keeping with a neighborhood.
And they would have all of that. I guess I just don't know that I like the mandate that you have to have a covered front porch. I guess this may be where my heart line is.
Okay.
I get it, I get what staff's intent was.
I think they need a door on the front, and they're gonna give a door on the side 'cause, or the back, because the parking can't be in the front, so they'll have a door closer, but I think these things, to me, relate to something that, when you drive by, is commercial nature, but looks residential, and I think are important. Now, does it need to have a front porch? I'm not convinced it needs to have a front porch. I'm willing to eliminate the need for a front porch, but the windows and the door, and the sidewalk on the door, and the exterior fence facing need to be of a certain material, I think are all good things.
Yeah, I'm fine with eight, nine, and 10. Like I say, I just, I guess the, having to have a 25-square-foot minimum porch just got in my craw.
Would you be willing to move forward if we took off the porch?
I would.
No taker!
Y'all can definitely outvote me, so it won't hurt my feelings.
Okay. Now, is there, what else?
Is everybody okay with the setbacks? We're talking about 15 feet allowed, and again, I'm talking about the mixed-use area. Where normally, you know, we're seeing 20 or 25 feet. Now, I get that maybe the object is to get it more of a, closer to the street home feel, maybe, is where that might have came from, but I'm...
I don't have a problem with the 15-foot, because the 15-foot gets it closer to the street, and then I have the parking around the back for the commercial area, and to me, that fits well.
What you, you're probably gonna need every inch of that.
Every inch of that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I guess the priority then is to have the parking out of the, sort of, right in front, but...
Yeah, a neighborhood doesn't have a lot of parking in front of their house. They have their driveway, and then parking garage and things, so I don't want a lot of parking in front of this, so I saw that as a positive thing.
To give you more room. I'm okay with that, yeah. Actually, the rest of it, I don't have any problem with.
Anybody else take any issue with any of the other requirements?
I am going to, right quickly, interject myself and give kudos to Jasmine, who is operating the cameras upstairs. She saw what we were talking about, and that I couldn't pull it up to where it was legible from the city website, so she moved it over to where I could access it. So, this is just what y'all are looking at and talking about. So, thank you, Jasmine.
Exactly. Any other questions on the requirements? Objections?
You know, I might add too, again, in the, in the conservation district, I'm fine with all of those.
Yes.
It's just, I've had a problem with the porch.
If I may clarify, now that we can see it up here, was it numbers one through six?
We had lots of this... I think that we just bounced down to six now, that we take an issue with?
So, that it has to be, have a front porch on number three, it's just, it does not have to be 25 square feet. I just wanna make it clear for when we report further to the city council.
Do we not want to define what porch is, if we just take off...
Firstly, I don't wanna define what porch is.
So, it's just item number six?
If we take off six, that doesn't...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let's go back. What are you saying there, Paula? The front porch must be at least 25 square feet.
Yes.
What about...
But you also had a problem with the number seven, didn't you?
No, seven was...
Where's the, how it has to be?
I think Dusty didn't like three through six.
Yeah.
You don't want porch requirements at all.
Yes, three through six, I didn't like any of those. Again, that's me, so I just left it out there.
Porch, period.
No porch requirements.
Okay. I'm looking to the rest of the...
If you don't have a porch, it won't be an issue, though. She's looking at you guys, if y'all are hurt with that or not. And again, you're not gonna hurt my...
I mean, I like the, I like the look of a building with a porch, but I don't think I would wanna be required to build a porch.
That's not the issue.
So, I'm in favor of limiting two, three, and five. And number four, I'm thinking we keep in, because if they want to build a porch, they can project a five-foot in there instead of being 15-foot, it's, can be 10-foot.
I agree, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah. I agree with you.
All right.
Wait, we wanna keep two, though, right?
I, I'm working my way there.
Sorry, Paul.
That is correct. Limit three and five. Three, five, and six. I overdid it there for a moment.
Three, five, and six.
Three, five, and six.
Okay. Three, five, and six.
Yes, ma'am. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Go back to those. Go back to the bolts.
Let me have my little tire rig.
Okay. If I may, while y'all are looking, if we're going on through the mixed-use... If I may, while y'all are looking, if we're going on through the mixed-use overlay, building design, any issues there? Seeing none. Accessory buildings? Driveways?
I like the tree requirement.
Parking? Any of the bolt standards, which is the setbacks or lot size?
If you guys don't mind, let's run back through those bullets one more time. And somebody who's smarter than me who wants to...
Sorry, it does that when we go. It's entertainment value this evening added.
Whoever plans on trying to craft a motion out of this mess may want to jot down where we're at on these, but let's go through these one more time. Is the area identified for the Neighborhood Conservation overlay district proper or does it need to be adjusted?
Proper.
I think we...
Proper.
Same question for the mixed-use overlay. Proper or adjusted?
Proper.
Proper? Okay. Is the rezoning process necessary for the underlying property in addition to the unapplied overlay district? Even with an overlay district that identifies specific uses in the manner in which properties are developed, a public hearing would be held to rezone the underlying zoning to a category that allows the proposed use?
I liked the application, the... That they apply for the application of the overlay to the place as a form of rezon.
Is there a benefit to that one, guys, over the other option that she offered us? We all in agreement that...
The two options, to me, seem to both to offer the possibility for a public hearing, which was what was important to me.
Yes. Either rezone your property to overlay district, but only within the areas identified through ordinance that the overlay district can apply to, or rezone the underlying zoning, just as the chair said, to a classification that allows the intended use and apply the overlay district at the same time. So it's just, process-wise, they'll be done in one public hearing process. You won't have to come back multiple times just to get the overlay if you do the underlying zoning. It's just a matter of completing the application properly, is all it would be. And making sure you ask for whatever that underlying zoning district is and the overlay district. Now, semantics, if only the uses identified in the overlay district are going to be encouraged in the properties that are covered by the overlay district, just rezoning to overlay district would be less confusing. Because if you have an overlay district over a commercial shopping that allows retail or bars or liquor store or, you know, some other use that is not identified in the overlay district, it could cause some confusion.
Okay. So just applying for rezoning to overlay district would be simpler?
And more clear, I believe.
The proper size limitation for a freestanding single unit, I think we agreed at 3,000. Proper size for multi-unit, I think we agreed to stay at that 3,000. What kinds of alcohol establishments? I think we...
No liquor stores, no bars.
Ruled out of Dry County. The screening for a dumpster, we agreed to go with...
Wood, brick, stone, or brick.
And then as far as the...
Design requirements for you.
Yeah. Wait, wait, wait.
Those few strikes.
Well, and then we also wanted to add the no porch.
Well, we're just gonna strike.
Strike the porch requirement.
Three, five, six? Three, five, six.
I am confident that Paula's done an excellent job writing all these down and know our intent. So we just have to make the motion as amended, as Paula's written down. Is that correct, Paula?
If not, we have you recorded.
That's great.
And Ashley is the one that gets to prepare the minutes for you.
Thank you, Ashley, for making those correct, not a single error. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Anyone wants to...
So I will move.
Okay.
And I'll read item number two, because I think that's a proper one. Find the comprehensive plan for the area that needs adjustment and that the proposed text amendment is needed and recommend that the City Council approve the 12th Avenue Land Use Plan Amendment, Alternate Number Two, Identified Amendments, and approve the proposed text amendment, established the Neighborhood Conservation overlay district and the Neighborhood Mixed Use overlay district with identified amendments as discussed previously tonight. Ziegler, have any problem with that?
Let us vote. And that will pass six to zero. Now, let me keep my front page. Yeah, let me borrow that if you don't mind. You're a good man. Okay. Item four, the plating process to include vesting, phasing, and others included in Chapter 23, Article 3, Land Use Process in Chapter 23, Article 16, Subdivision Preparation and Requirements. Continued discussion from the April 4th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. That is also me. We had distributed at your last Planning Commission meeting where we were unable to receive a quorum the comparison table that y'all had asked for of the other cities. And I know this was a lot of information for tonight's meeting for y'all to go through. I'd be happy for us to continue this or we can further have this discussion. It looks like that the majority... And this would be my recommendation moving forward. The majority of communities around here do have longer periods of standing approvals for preliminary plats. Of course, they range, but some of them, I found it very interesting, have where you get a one-time extension for a maximum of so many years that that approval is valid for. And then, if it expires, then you come back in. So I would encourage us to really iron out Planning Commission preliminary approvals on plats, because they go no further. They don't go to City Council. Those approvals being five years instead of the two that we have now. A one-time extension of five years prior to the five-year... Initial five-year expiration. And anything after that, then it would need to come back through if any final plat or any phase of a final plat is not filed on it. So that would give, in essence, a preliminary plat 10 years of being authorized to be final plat, be approved off of it. Does that seem reasonable?
Things definitely better than what we have.
Does anybody in the room want to say anything?
Mr. Goose.
I was gonna... I was turning around to see if he was still here.
I expected you would say something, so...
Well, I don't have the written... What I just heard Paula say, and I think I agree, you know, preliminary plat would be good for five with a five-year extension. I didn't follow you on the final plat part of it. If a final plat's filed on any portion thereof, how long is it good?
Final plat?
Yeah. No, the preliminary plat.
There would be a lasting 10 years in front of there if they...
So if you had 10 sections and you had filed eight finals in the first 10 years, the last two go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Come back through to the front there.
With another preliminary. Okay, that's not what I heard back there, but that was back there. We're gonna have to do something, because what we have now, I still think there's a difference of opinion on what... How it reads. And I think the reason is the new standard... You know, standards change. Life safety issues. Some of these preliminary plats need to be adjusted. And this may be... Unless we got some wording in there, you know, they might have to conform through minor amendments to any life safety issues that come up. Still, 10 years should be planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Paula?
What's our next step here, Paula?
If y'all just want to give us some direction, we can come back at the next Planning Commission meeting with some draft language for you to consider. And we can start working it through the public hearing process, because this would be an amendment to the Land Development Code. We could go ahead and advertise that we're looking at changing, actually changing what the code says in this section where it's applicable. And that would open up the notification for anybody else that may want to come in and offer any opinions. One, the next on my list, because preliminary plat is the main issue that has been brought up to us, to staff and now Planning Commission. But another issue is that of would minor amendments to an approved preliminary plat be acceptable? And there are a number of cities that have those criteria, what constitutes a minor amendment that staff or the Planning Commission could hear without having to come all the way back through a preliminary plat being approved again. So I would like to, if the will of the Planning Commission, draft up some of that language also.
That would be great. I'd like to see that. And I think it's something we need to do, because it is a little bit... A little bit open-ended right now and vague, so I would appreciate that.
Okay. So finally, final plats. Many communities have a much shorter final plat validity period because you're already at the end. You've already expended the funds and the energy and the time and the resources to put the improvements in the ground or have those improvements approved and accepted by whatever local jurisdiction. So instead of just a preliminary, which is more of a concept plan on how the land will be divided, the final plat has a lot of money tied to it. It has a lot of vesting, which we'll need to address at another time, because I do not have information with me on vesting tonight. But I think the final plat, it's fair to say that a two- or three-year time period on the final plat, making sure it is filed of record from the date it is approved within that time period, would be a reasonable...
From the date what's approved, Paula?
The final plat, which would be the City Council action.
So you're saying three years from the time it's approved at City Council?
It would need to be filed of record, yes.
I would think that would be plenty.
Usually, they're 30 days that they're filed of record. Yes, the current requirement is two years they have to be filed of record. Very rarely do we come across a final plat that has been approved and it has not been filed within a month or two of its approval. Or even change it at all, because we have two years.
I'm thinking we don't change it. We make the other changes and go with that for a while. Two years seems like a long time.
Most of the time, by that time, a developer is running to the courthouse with it, because they've got lots of money tied up in it.
Okay. All right. We will bring information back to you at the next meeting then on this. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, approval of the meeting summary of discussion and possible action for the meeting summary of April 4th, 2017.
Move for approval?
Second. I would like to say, Ashley, that was a big old sediment. You did what? Get official... Official, atta girl.
The rankings are gonna be probably three times that long.
You documented my frustration real well.
Six to zero. And with that, we will... We have... The next meeting will be May 16th, 2017. And with that, we'll entertain another question from Paula.
I do just have one announcement tonight. It's the last evening that Michael Beatty will be presenting before you. He is leaving employment with the city, so I just wanted y'all to know that y'all are stuck with me and Tom and Patty from here on out. So just... I didn't know if all of you knew that or not, but just letting you know.
On behalf of the commission, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Beatty, for your countless hours of public service and for all you've done for this commission. I know we appreciate that very much, and we mean that. And with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn to go give Mike a high five.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Let us vote. We are adjourned.